There's still money in the account when we got home, so I'm okay.
I'd like to welcome you out to our Planning Commission meeting this evening. This is Planning Commission for November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. This meeting is being recorded. We're going to begin with an opening prayer by Commissioner Showers and then a pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Callis.
Our dear Father and have more grateful to be here tonight at this meeting. We pray thy Spirit to be with us. We are grateful for this upcoming holiday season. We pray that we can look for ways to serve our family and friends and our community. And to recognize the great blessing it is to live here in Linden. And we pray for these things and give thee thanks for these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Would the audience please arise? To keep the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin our meeting this evening with an audible roll call of the Commissioners. Sharon Cole here, Mike Marchbanks.
Here.
Jared Showers.
Here.
Rob Callis.
Here.
Stephen Johnson.
Here.
Scott Thompson.
Here.
And Renee Tribe.
Here.
The next item on our agenda, this is a time for approval of the minutes. This would be the minutes from ten twenty-five, twenty twenty-two. Commissioners have received those ahead of time and had a chance to review those. The only thing that I wondered about is, on the approval of the first item on the agenda, it doesn't list, it lists Commissioner Thompson as seconding the motion. But it doesn't look like it lists him as approving it.
Right, so thank you for catching that, Sharon.
That's okay, yeah.
Copy it over, thank you.
Yep. And I didn't see anything else. Anyone else? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion to have a second.
A second, yeah.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous. The next item on our agenda, this is a time for public comment. This would be for any items that are not already on the agenda for this evening. Anyone here for that purpose? The next item on our agenda, this is the Anderson Farms major subdivision approval, plat H. And our applicant is Ivory Development LLC. Do we have someone here from Ivory?
Yes.
Okay, if you want to come up to the front, sir. And then our presenting staff on that is Mary Barnes. Okay, if you want to go ahead.
Yeah, thanks Commissioner Cole. Okay, so this major subdivision application is for plat H. It's the seventh phase in the Anderson Farms development on the west side of Linden. This plat is a forty-two lot detached, single-family subdivision where lot sizes range from, here, I have it here, six thousand six hundred and fifty-one square feet to eleven thousand two hundred and eighty-seven square feet with an average lot size of, oh, sorry, that's the development agreement, so the actual lot size ranges from seven thousand one hundred and sixty square feet to twelve thousand eight hundred and forty-seven square feet, with the actual average lot size being eight thousand six hundred and ninety-one square feet. And the roads and lots throughout the subdivision do meet our subdivision requirements. As you know, you know, this was all laid out in the development agreement that was signed and recorded in twenty sixteen. But I just want to go through a few of the requirements that were in the development agreement specifically for this parcel H. I'll pull it up on the concept plan. This parcel H area down here. So with this plat, they will be putting in part of twelve hundred west, as you can see right here. It won't go all the way out to seven hundred north, but they will be putting in that in. And then also they'll be putting improvements along five hundred north, which include eight-foot masonry wall landscaping and curb and gutter. And then we did get word just today that Ivory Homes, Ivory does want to split plat H into a two-phase plat, similar to what they did with plat E, which is just across Anderson Boulevard. Therefore, because of that, you know, that change so late in the staff report process, it was today, we recommend that you add a condition of approval stating that the applicant will present a two-phase plat to the city council whenever they get on the next city council meeting, but I'm sure, what's your name, sorry?
John.
John can explain a little bit more about that if you have any questions.
Can you repeat that, Mary, sorry? The change was on which parcels again?
So they're, on this plat, they're wanting to phase it to like a plat H1 and then a plat H2 kind of thing. Sorry, I should have explained that a little better. They've done that in the past with plat E, they did a phase one and a phase two just across Anderson Boulevard. So it has happened in the past. And because we just heard about it today, it's not in your staff report. So we're recommending you add a condition of approval to the existing list to, let me see what I wrote. Stating that the applicant will present a two-phase plat to the city council.
So, yeah, we would go ahead and recommend approvals to the city council based on that being one of the conditions.
Yeah, exactly.
The reason is it's forty-two lots and, you know, a year, year or two ago with the market conditions, that would have made more sense, but we just need to shrink it down.
So you're gonna, as far as the two phases though, you're gonna go ahead with the forty-two lots, it's just you're gonna do one phase and get that sold out first?
Yeah.
And then do the second phase?
Yes.
Now, my only question would be, I mean, what we would approve tonight wouldn't necessarily be what's going to the city council.
No, that's why they'll need to see what's actually, how it's broken up into the two phases.
And we can do that without us approving the two phases?
With the condition of approval, we feel good about that.
We can do that?
Because really, they're just gonna, you know,
Draw a line somewhere.
Draw that line down the middle. So you're, it's still gonna look exactly like this, it's not going to change, you're still having the same number of lots.
Okay. It's just gonna be done in
Phases.
Phases.
Yeah, just H1, H2.
And, and I guess the market right now has affected your sales down there too, right?
Yes, I mean, it's, it's across the board.
Because of the interest rates and that, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Anything else, Mary, or?
What, may I ask a question? What would be broken into phases? The infrastructure or?
The number of units?
So, yeah, I mean, basically, we would just split that, that plat in half. So, so the infrastructure would, you know, be broken along that path, on that phase line.
Does that cause any issues with?
We would work through engineering if we need to add a manhole or a water valve, we would just have that updated on our plan, so. I mean, right now, just, just quickly, I would break it kind of between lot nine forty-one, nine twenty, and across the street to nine twenty-five, nine twenty-six, just right.
Oh, here?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'd see.
Oh, yeah, let me explain this black line right here. So in the development agreement, it says that you cannot build a residential, I can't remember, yeah, it's an industrial setback, so you can't build a residential home so close to the industrial zone. So this black line represents that industrial setback, and there it is right there as well. And it was on this previous plat as well, plat G, all these homes had that same black line.
That are next to the industrial.
Mm-hmm.
The only question I have was, I, I guess I couldn't remember when it says this, it was decided by the city, the roundabout would not be constructed. Can you show us where that is and what's happening with that?
Yeah, so one of the development requirements for parcel H was, I had it in here, Sharon's talking about is this one, full northern roundabout improvements, including landscaping. And I said it was decided by the city. So if you come to this concept plan, it shows this roundabout right here. And so this was done during, it says parcel A, but this was plat E, phase one and phase two right here. So when that came through, they decided to deviate from this street alignment a little bit and bring this, this cross, you know, the, the access out to Anderson Boulevard, this northern access, down a little. And so they took out this roundabout, they figured it out with engineering. I wasn't here when that happened, but
I just couldn't remember what happened on that.
Prior to me as well, so. It really went back even further, the previous, there's two concept plans, if you remember. This is the second concept plan. Because of that deeper commercial portion, our, our time has expired on that, and it was coming up on that. And so the, that, that plan did not have the roundabout. But then this one did, but it was already too late to put in the roundabout, because we'd already approved that, that phase A over there. And so
Yeah.
Going back, we, you know, we probably would have done it differently and would have liked to have still had the roundabout, but, but it's too late now and.
Okay. I don't have other questions. Do any of you have questions?
No.
Be straightforward.
I mean, it's very outlined in the development agreement that we put in place a long time ago. Are we ready for an approval? For the subdivision? Do you have someone that would like to make a motion on that?
I'll make a recommendation. I move to recommend, recommend approval of the applicant's request for preliminary, preliminary major subdivision approval of Anderson Farms plat H, forty-two lots with the following conditions. The applicant will continue to work with the city engineer to make all final corrections to the engineering documents and plat. Prior to plat recording, the applicant will provide staff with a final plat Mylar to include notarized signatures of owner's consent to dedication, and obtain signatures of all entities indicated on the attached subdivision plat. Complete or post inadequate improvement completion assurance warrant and post required assurance for all required public infrastructure improvements. Plan and plat will meet and be constructed with per, as per applicable specifications as found in the Linden City Development Manual. All items of parcel H found in the development agreement will be completed. That the applicant will provide the city council with a two-stage development plan and all items of the staff report.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous. I hope you can sell the homes, huh?
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda, this is for minor subdivision approval for Aspen Ridge plat C. And this is at, at about three forty-one South, two eighty West. And our applicant is Joseph Martel. And our presenting staff is Mary Barnes. If you want to go ahead.
Yeah, of course, thank you. So this item is a minor subdivision, a simple minor subdivision for one lot within the R one twenty zone located, I say approximately three forty-one South, two eighty West, but that's going to be the address, so pretty much exactly. Anyways, if you remember last November around this time, it's like the, also like the eleventh or something, you approved Aspen Ridge plat B, which was the lot on this other side you see. Right, there are lot three plat B with Gemma and Jacob Young. So this is just a continuation of Mr. Martel's subdivision of his property. With the previous plat, the cul-de-sac was put in with all the public improvements, so there won't be any public improvements with this plat. And the purpose of this new lot with plat C is to build a single-family home. And this lot does meet minimum size, depth, and width, and frontage requirements, and it meets all other subdivision requirements. And the Planning Commission is the final land use authority on minor subdivisions. So do you have any questions for me or Joe Martel?
I cannot remember what the green belt is.
Yeah.
Farming and taxes.
It says in order to remain in the green belt.
Yeah, so
And I, I'm sure we've talked about it, but I don't
Yeah, so that's
He's gotta keep a minimum acreage to keep the, the rest of his property in green belt taxation.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it has to do with the taxation then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It allows qualifying property to be assessed and taxed based on its productive capability instead of market value, is that right?
Right, it's, it's, it's a state.
If he plats it, if he puts it in a subdivided lot, he'll, he'd have to argue till the, forever to get it back in green belt.
Right. And, and that's the reason, you know, we could have done all three lots at the same time and platted it. But the, these, Gemma Young's my daughter, and Ray, my son, is gonna be building on lot four. At the time when we platted it, they were years out, they weren't ready to do that. And rather than eating the property taxes every year, we decided, let's just wait till you're ready. Well, of course, they're ready about the same time we finished the cul-de-sac. So it has a huge tax implication for us, not just because of green belt, because of tax valuations. Because, you know, this year, basically, everybody got hit by a fifty to a hundred percent tax hike, valuation hike, not the tax, but the actual valuation. And so that impacts green belt, and it rolls off after five years. So we're not, we're, if it's more economical to just pay the subdivision fee twelve hundred dollars and do that as we sell each lot, you might see that starting to happen more with these smaller subdivisions, just because of the property thing. So that's why we're here now instead of having done this earlier in the spring.
Okay. To refresh my memory, how many acres do you have?
So we had five contiguous acres.
Right.
Well, actually, six. This one parcel was five acres. We peeled off in plat B, the cul-de-sac, and my daughter's home, which is about point eight acres. We'll be peeling off point seven acres. So we will actually fall below the five-acre contiguous minimum. And the county has, in theory, adopted what's called the Urban Farm Act, which is for parcels less than five acres. But I've been trying to work with them, and I can't get definitive whatever, you know, that, yeah, we can do this, and they don't have their processes in place. So we tried to push off peeling off acreage. This will, this will definitely force us to go below five acres. And then we're gonna have to work with the county to see if we can roll over to the small, the
Urban farm?
Urban farm.
Oh, that's interesting, well, thank you for that education.
It's, it's really complicated, and it's been a long road.
What do you farm?
So we, our main farm is peaches and concord grapes. We sell mostly at Farmer's Market or in Linden now. Also do apples and asundrio. Our main crop is peach, concord grapes, and Christmas trees. We're starting to do Christmas trees. So if you drive up there on that cul-de-sac, you'll see our, our peaches, and just pass that, our vineyard, and then a bunch of little Christmas trees.
Can people come cut their own tree, or do you cut them and?
That's what we want to do.
That'd be fun.
Their, Christmas trees take about a foot per year, so it takes about eight years to get a harvestable Christmas tree.
So they're not ready yet.
We're just starting to get there on some of our other trees.
Fun, interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we're really, and Mayor Lundberg's been a huge proponent of, you know, urban farm type stuff, and so we're, intent is to keep as much of the property in the, in the family farm. So after these two other lots get peeled off, the remaining two and a half to three acres will stay as farm for hopefully a while, if we don't get eaten alive by taxes.
Well, your children are lucky
Yeah.
to have land that they can use.
And it's great to have the family still be close to the farm.
Oh, yeah, that's terrific.
I was hoping you'd been talking with Mayor Lundberg, because she's been very instrumental in trying to help bring this to fruition, the Urban Farm Act.
Yeah, she's been working with the county, and she's been great, yeah.
That's great. I don't have any other questions other than just having you educate me. Anyone else have questions on this?
No.
Are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the applicant's request for the one lot minor subdivision approval located at three four one South, two eight zero West with the following conditions. One, the applicant will continue to work with the city engineer to make all final corrections to the engineering documents and plat. Two, complete or post inadequate improvement completion assurance, that's really not gonna be, but anyway, warrant and post required assurance for all required in public infrastructure improvements. It sounds like they were all put in already, but three, prior to plat recording, the applicant will update the final plat Mylar to include notarized signatures of owner's consent to dedication and obtain signatures of all entities indicated on the subdivision plat attached here. Two, four, the plans and plat will meet and be constructed as per applicable specifications as found in the Linden City Development Manual. And five, all items of the staff report.
I second that.
Hey, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is an ordinance amendment, and so we do need to open a public hearing, to have a motion to open a public hearing.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Okay, do I have a, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous. And this is item number six, ordinance amendment for Appendix A Standards Land Use Table and Definitions. And Mike Florence is our presenter on this, and we do have some public here. We will open some time for some comments after we've heard the presentation.
All right, thank you Commissioners, it's great to be here with you this evening. So the, Linden City has made application to amend the standard land use table for the Planning Commission and City Council to consider prohibiting extended stay hotels in the commercial zones. They're already, motels are already prohibited in the industrial zones, but this would prohibit extended stay hotels in all commercial zones. And so we've made that change. Moving here in the standard land use table noted on your screen. The, we've also come up with definitions for hotel and motel and extended stay hotel and motel. And so the, the main difference between the definitions is the thirty percent, we came up with a thirty percent requirement. And so basically, a hotel means a building containing temporary lodging offered to the public for compensation on a nightly basis and in which less than thirty percent of all guest rooms are offered for occupancy for more than thirty days within a forty-five consecutive days. And so the opposite of that is the extended stay, which would be thirty percent or more of the rooms or units would be offered for occupation for more than thirty days. The, or it says in which less than, you know, going back to the hotel definition, or in which less than thirty percent of all guest rooms have facilities for appliances for extended stays. For purposes of this section, facilities or appliances for extended stays means any facilities or appliances other than coffee makers, mini refrigerators, microwave, small kitchenette sinks, and or irons and ironing boards, and includes, but it's not limited to cooktops, stoves, ovens, dishwashers, and other in-room laundry facilities. For purposes of this section, hotel motel and extended stay hotel motel are separate and distinct uses. Hotel slash motel does not include short-term rental, extended stay hotel motel, or homeless shelter. And so that, that would be that definition of a hotel and motel. Extended stay hotel motel, it's, 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 it's very similar, but it's occupancy for guest rooms, thirty percent or more for extended stay, and thirty percent of the guest rooms have, like the list we just went through with the cooktop or the stove or the refrigerator, those items making it the extended stay. So that's the difference between those, those two definitions. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay. So a couple of the, what we looked at as, as we've considered this change. The city has evaluated and researched extended stay hotel models, and we have several concerns about how these uses may impact our community as well as whether or not they're compliant or would be compliant with our commercial zoning. I'm gonna go through those in more detail. The extended stay hotels are primarily marketed for a longer-term stay and for, for temporary housing. In addition, extended stay hotels can also receive a disproportionate number of calls for emergency services for, from police and fire. The general plans, land use guidelines recommend that the city consider service and fiscal impacts to potential uses. These hotels tend to attract a clientele that aren't always positive influence on the hotel and the surrounding areas. They can, it can often become difficult to attract good economic development around extended stay hotels. So extended stay hotels, you know, looking at all their websites, doing research on them. They range in from basically one night to an undetermined period of time. This, this includes monthly, weekly, and extent, and yearly extended stays with no departure date. Few different articles that I read, and I submitted to Kathy a copy of all those articles, as well as the Planning Commission for the record. For example, Forbes dot com, they looked at all of the extended stays from across the country, so a national look at them. And they, they determined that the average stay was one point seven years in an extended stay hotel. Other articles, you know, said it was more like a couple of weeks to a few months. One of the major concerns in the city is that many cases extended hotels turn into a de facto residence for an individual or family. For practical purposes, units can become the primary residence, many extended stay hotel motels market to college students. So if you, if you look at their websites, they'll say, you know, you can rent here for off-campus housing. And, and, you know, and so the really, how we're looking at is, this is, and we'll get into more detail, is this really what is compliant with our zoning? Our zoning recommends commercial uses in a commercial zone. And like I said, we'll go into that in more detail. Many of the families or individuals or college students, they move into extended stay hotels for, for financial reasons. You don't have to sign a contract, many may not be able to afford a first and last month, last month's rent. They may not have the credit or pass a background check, and so that's, that's, this is, offers that, that housing for them. Some of the extended stay Some of the extended stay hotel websites I looked at actually call it temporary housing. You'll also nonprofit groups, they they will use extended stay hotels for temporary housing and assistance for those who are in crisis. So they have some place to reside. The city, when we're looking at these, we really need to look at the long term. You know, just like any use, may look shiny and new right off the bat, but what what's it going to look like? How's it going to be managed in ten years, in fifteen years, in forty years? You know, and what what do those calls for service look like in ten years or forty years? And we'll go into that a little bit more here in a minute. Many of the many of them change ownership quite often. As I was looking at different extended stay hotels, just looking at the property records, that, you know, for example, the extended stay hotel just in American Fork, it's changes changed hands three times in the last thirteen years. So you never know what type of management or ownership you're going to get for that next extended stay hotel. The most of the extended stays hotels, they they franchisees out or they're or a development company comes in and builds under that name. Personally, in my previous employment, we found it very difficult to enforce any rules. We couldn't get the the hotel chain or the franchise to help us out with any type of enforcement, help us out with making things better at the extended stay hotel. Let's see. And then lastly, on this section, over the past two years, it's become more prevalent and for developers to come in and buy extended stay hotels for for permanent housing. They already have the cooking facilities, they already have things ready, and those and so they'll turn those into apartments when they start to outlive their life. So like you said, the the going into the commercial zones, this is where they're currently allowed any hotel in in the PC one, PC two, commercial general, commercial general A, commercial general A day, commercial general S, the mixed commercial, the research and business, and the Linden Village Zone. In those we allow, we the only residential uses we allow are youth rehabilitation, assisted living, care facilities, and caretaker residence. It appears that extended stay hotels, by allowing someone to stay there for temporary housing or or for housing, that conflicts with the types of residential uses that we do allow in those commercial zones. Those are primarily focused towards commercial uses. We've looked at our general plan and our seven hundred North Master Plan. They both they both are promoted towards commercial uses in our commercial zones. The city, and then, sorry, and I and I went through the ordinance a few minutes ago. Transient room tax. So the state of Utah has, and I put this in your staff report, they put this publication out that basically says lodging stays of thirty se- thirty consecutive days or longer are exempt from tax sales tax and transient room tax. So if you have someone that stays, a tenant that stays in there longer than thirty days, then the city doesn't get any of its sales tax or transient rooms tax off that room. We lose that. And so that could have a fiscal impact on the community by allowing resident or tenants to stay there longer than thirty days. I did find that some hotels require that a tenant move out every twenty-eight days or change rooms every twenty-eight days so that they could keep that that sales or transit room tax going. However, that that still doesn't comply or meet that intent of not turning an extended stay hotel into a housing. Last couple of things, want to look at crime rates. You know, we just from experience and looking at other communities, talking to some other surrounding communities, their chiefs of police, they they do see a uptick in crime at extended stay hotels. We I looked at this, we did a records request with from Provo City. So this is University Avenue, just off the the exit there, you've got the Provo Town Center to your left here. The Sam's Club is underneath this graph. So we we didn't get all the hotels from Provo City, but the ones we did get were using here. So you've you've got four different hotels. These two, this Little Suites Provo Extended Stay, really old. It was built in nineteen seventy-five. It's forty-seven years old. But you can see the calls for service are a hundred and thirty-one calls for service. This is from November twenty twenty-one to November twenty twenty-two. So in a one-year period, they had the police there or emergency services there a hundred and thirty-one times. The Residence Inn, which is right next door, was built five years ago, had thirty-three calls in the past year. If you look at the two overnight hotels, the Fairfield Inn, built in nineteen eighty-seven, and the Hampton Inn, built in nineteen ninety-five. They're both older hotels, but you can see they have thirteen calls for service per year. You know, even though that Residence Inn is only five years old, it's got triple the amount of calls for service basically that an older traditional overnight hotel built in nineteen eighty-seven and nineteen ninety-five have. And so we we just wanted to go through those and bring those to your attention is is one of the things you should consider with this amendment. So I think that goes through most of my presentation. We have this ordinance for you. You'll be making a recommendation to the city council. City council will be the final authority on whether or not to amend the ordinance. So do you have any questions for me?
I I think you've covered it quite well. Yeah. And anyone else have questions?
Do we have, I'm trying to think. Any left?
Any one?
Any of these left in Linden? I mean, we used to have like the White.
Well, we used to have one.
The White Hotel, which became the White Apartments, but it's gone now.
Yeah.
Trying to think if there are any others.
Or is it no, we don't have any?
So we don't have any current, we don't even have any motels or hotels, right, currently? Okay. Trying to scratch my brain.
It's where the new car wash and stuff.
Yeah, the the used to be the White Hotel. It became, I think it became the White Apartments afterwards.
Anyone else have questions or staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. So if if there is, if residents would like to ask questions or make a comment, you're welcome to do that. We limit that usually to within three to five minutes. So, you know, it's just a public hearing time, not a presentation time. So if any of you would like to make comments, we'd just like you to state your name.
Do you want to come up to the table?
No, because it this is just a public hearing, it's not a presentation. Oh, that's right. Go ahead and come up to the microphone so that those who are online could hear you. Okay? Any of you here for that purpose?
We're at interest party, but we don't have any comments or questions.
Okay. And you, sir?
I'm just gonna hold.
Okay.
I want to see what kind of, you know.
If he's got a space, he needs to come up to the microphone.
Okay.
I'm just gonna stay here.
Mike, one question I had then. Are there any other cities around us that have a similar ordinance? Does anybody else exclude these in in the surrounding area?
I I know South Salt Lake does. I know Richfield City has just passed an ordinance because of the they had a hotel turn into basically long-term housing. Right, I'm not I'm not aware of any others right now.
Well, the the thing that I noticed with this with this ordinance is it it doesn't exclude people from from staying for a longer time, just not more than thirty percent of the rooms.
Right, so if a hotel chain wants to come in and they've got, they want to do less than thirty percent of their units as extended stay, that that's totally acceptable under this ordinance.
We're not excluding that, we're just limiting the number of rooms that can be used for that purpose.
And then I guess for Brian, any legal ramifications from a city in adopting this?
No, no, this is well within the city's discretion to regulate, you know. Again, the the there there was a case out of St. George. I was just looking up to make sure St. George still, St. George prohibits people staying longer than thirty days in their commercial zone. I don't know that they specifically designate or distinguish between extended stay hotels or not like this one does and has a distinct definition, but there was a case that challenged St. George's thirty-day stay and and went up on appeal, and they said that's well within the discretion of the municipality to regulate what goes on in their commercial zones. So this this is well within the city's discretion.
I don't have other questions. Can you, you need to give your name and and?
You guys all know me. I'm Michael Cutley. I represent the sellers of the property. I'm just wondering, we've we've since my seller's purchased the property, it's had the Linden Village Code put on it, and then we've had, we've overlaid numerous things over it. We've had we've had IBI do a study on this particular property and come back and make certain recommendations that, you know, no one paid any attention to. And now, you know, I finally bring a buyer that wants to put some motels on here, and we're going to regulate that out. I mean, at what point does my seller have any rights to, you know, maintain the property value that they that they have there? I mean, you know, at one point, am I going to bring something that they're going to say, oh, we don't want that because they're going to might be wearing two-piece bathing suits at that particular site? I mean, where does this stop? I just, that's my big big question is where does this stop? And I'm getting a little frustrated because I'm doing a lot of work here to bring things to this city that makes sense, and then I'm being slapped in the face and said, oh, no, that's not good enough. They're not good enough. We wanted something more upscale than what they're bringing. And that's pretty much where I stand, and I'm a little little getting a little frustrated about this. I mean, you people see me here, I've been on this particular project for six years in January. Do you know how many people I've had shot down? They, oh, sorry, we don't like you. We don't want you there. And they just go away, which is exactly what, you know, officials want.
Well, I without saying too much, I I do think, you know, there's a certain standard that we're wanting to uphold on that seven hundred North corridor. And and with this particular ordinance, I guess my feelings are we're not saying no one can stay there for an extended time, we're just limiting that.
So we could put a Marriott on there that's not an extended stay, and someone could stay there for two hundred and forty days, and it wouldn't be a problem.
Well, this ordinance would limit that.
No, not that they're not an extended stay circumstance, no.
Oh, well, thirty thirty percent of the rooms could.
Could be, but if someone stays in one of the nonextended stay rooms and decides to stay there for sixty to eighty days, there's no problem with that.
Yes, this is coming out of our business area too, where our purpose is the transient occupancy tax. So the minute somebody moves into one of these and it goes over the certain threshold, they no longer generate the tax revenue.
I get that, I mean, it comes down to sales tax.
Do you understand any of the concerns that have been posted here today?
I I totally do, and Mike's comparing South Salt Lake with Linden.
I'm not comparing South Salt Lake. He continues to bring this up, which he's wrong. I did, you know, I haven't even mentioned South Salt Lake until the commission asked me what ordinance is wrong. I get a little tired of his dishonesty.
No, Mike, that was what, that was a statement that you. That was the statement that you made to me in your office that day.
Okay, well, this isn't, this isn't a time for debate on that. This is a time for the planning commission to determine whether this is the type of ordinance we want to put in place for development there. Thank you so much. And go ahead. Go ahead.
Do you want to close the public hearing, or do you?
Yeah, if there's no other comments, then we will go ahead and close the public hearing and discuss it among the commission.
I'm so moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous.
I wish the gentleman's still here, but if I recall.
Hey, Rob, we'll need you to speak in the.
I remember as he, the gentleman has brought things here, it usually was asking for something different than the zone permitted.
Usually residential.
Yeah, multifamily residential. So I I think that's the root of his frustration. I guess what we could say is just bring something that meets the code and.
Well, or meets what we're looking for.
I mean, he has, he's he's brought, he's brought the Everlights, he's brought Enium, he's brought the Jim, he's brought three commercial uses, and we've approved a subdivision for all three, and you'll hear in the next couple of months or couple of weeks, you'll be reviewing those, some of those, starting to review those for site plan approval.
Just a curiosity question. I mean, I don't disagree with bringing this up and looking at it. What was the impetus to bring this up? I mean, was is there a proposal that came, or is it just something that the city's been worried about for a while? What what would be the impetus to get the get this ball rolling?
Yeah, a few months back, there was a development group for for the south side of seven hundred North. They brought the extended stay hotel group, which I think it's the same ones in. We expressed our concerns at that time. They didn't listen to us, and so the city moved forward on a on an ordinance amendment.
Okay, so so there was there was a reason.
But they have not submitted an application.
There hasn't been any application or anything, but it was a suggestion that concerned the city, and so the city is looking at at possibly moving forward. That's that's helpful to understand the background. Any other crime studies or anything? I mean, I mean, we got this one little one, I mean.
There were a lot that, did you see that in your report?
Email today.
I had didn't have time to read the email today with it being today, so.
It was last night, I think I sent that.
Last night, there were, there was a long list of of different locations.
Well, Steve, as as a police officer for thirty-three years in a major city, we spent an inordinate amount of time going to those types of those types of facilities. It's constant. I mean, because it's it's there, the people are in and out, 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 and it it's constantly rotating and from my experience, it was they they weren't a good benefit to the community.
Yeah, and I would say from from my view, just observation, no real facts behind it. A lot of these in cities, as they get older, look run down. I mean, that's just seemed to be that way, but that yeah, I'll have to read the, I guess I'll have to go on and I I said I didn't. Unfortunately, I don't have most of the time, a day or I have to take the weekend to read things, so. I apologize, I didn't get to that, if that's where it was.
Yeah, and we have a very small, efficient police department here. And to add a a large load to them over a very small benefit, I don't think is 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 worthwhile.
Is that the city's main concern, or is the loss of tax? I I can see both, you know, the loss of of tax revenue being a concern.
All of the above.
I mean, is there a ranking or anything from the city?
First, it's, you know, what's the, is it compliant with our zoning? So we're, is allowing a temporary a housing use or housing use compliant with your commercial zoning? That that's the first thing. I tried to label those in the in the staff report. So that that that's really is is are we compliant with our zoning? Second was sales tax. Third was crime.
And and I see all those, I get, so.
I I think something that's important to note too is the fact that that they, when they did this one study back, so one of them, they said like eighty-four percent of the of the residences, extended stay hotels, considered it their primary residence. Okay, so if they consider their primary residence, would we allow a hotel? I mean, an apartment complex to go down in this particular location standing in the same spot? The answer would be no.
Right, and that that's that's your issue number one, right, is that it becomes ba- basically residential housing in a commercial district. Thank you for clarifying that.
I've I've got a couple of thoughts, I guess, on that. I can think of half it as a reasons why really good people would need extended stay accommodations and I mean, they could be just arriving here to Utah and looking for permanent housing and maybe they rent a house and it flooded and insurance company needs a place to put them, and I mean, there's lots of reasons. I think Airbnb type situations are really good for that. I know I've hosted a lot of people who have been with me for a month or two on my Airbnb property. And they've been great. But I, I feel like just turning over an entire building to extended stay, I think is, is a mistake. I think if, if there is a hotel chain out there that wants to have, you know, the, the traditional hotel rooms plus, like we're saying, thirty percent extended stay, I think it gives the hotel more motivation to regulate who's going in there extended stay. So they're not turning off the, the clientele that might be staying a night or two. And so I think management is going to step up in that situation where there's some sort of accountability there and there's motivation to make sure that their guests are being taken care of. So I, I'm not really in favor of putting a full extended stay hotel in, in, in town. But there is a need for it and there are good people that need it, I guess is one of my points. And so we don't want to totally classify those that might use that facility as undesirable people.
Right, and that's the reason why I like this ordinance, that it does allow for thirty percent of the units to.
Is that fairly common, the thirty percent? Or is that a number we've created or is that?
We've seen it in quite a few ordinances.
Quite a few ordinances, the thirty percent, okay.
So I agree with what you're saying, Jared, but, but what this is doing is saying we can still accommodate.
Yeah, and I like that. I'm saying that's, I think that could be a really nice. Yeah, I think that could be a really nice business model.
We could even go as far as to encourage, we could even go as far as to encourage for future motels to, or hotels to do that, to provide some, some form.
Well, an issue that we haven't even talked about here, which makes me wonder if, I mean, it, it seems like we need to clean up the ordinance down there, but the seven hundred North corridor and the architectural standards we have in place, I don't even see how it'd be feasible. It'd be the Taj Mahal of all extended stay hotels to beat the, the criteria down there, even if it could be done. So, I mean, I, it doesn't seem feasible to me from, from a standpoint of, of that even. I'm sure you haven't seen drawings or anything of that nature to.
Nobody's filed an application.
See who's building the.
All this is, is our, our ordinance to, to, so that it's what we want it to be.
I don't see a mini Grand America extended stay hotel there on the seven hundred North corridor. But anyway.
Well, unless there's other discussion, what are your thoughts as far as approving the ordinance?
I, I'm prepared to make a motion. Move this on to our city council radio too.
And, and that's what we are doing, is making a recommendation.
You want me to make that now?
Sure.
I move to recommend denial of this, excuse me, approval of this ordinance to the city council, ordinance amendment twenty twenty-two nineteen dash zero, as presented by our staff.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous. And, and thank you to Mike and to Brian Hauser, our city attorney, for preparation of the, of the ordinance. I know that was a lot of work put into it.
Can I just make one comment? Frankly, I think thirty percent sounds a little high for extended stay.
It's generous for sure.
Oh, that's real.
That was my feeling too.
You know, you get a, let's just say you get a courtyard Marriott, two hundred rooms. That's six hundred or sixty rooms. But you're saying that's pretty standard.
I mean, it was all over the place. We saw some that said ten percent, some that said five. We, we did see, you know, thirty seemed to be a pretty good range that we saw.
I just think it'd be interesting to see if they actually go to that. You know, if you're, if you're running a hotel, you know, if you really go to that big of a percentage of. Like I said, it'd be interesting to see.
Well, it's, they're going to make sure that it stays up to a certain standard because of the other, the other seventy percent.
Well, where most of the, the company I work for owns twenty-four hotels. And, and most of them are of the brand Hilton or Residence Inn or, you know, Marriott. And they do have some extended stays, but they're usually like a contractor that's coming in, out of town overseeing a project that's under construction. He might be there for forty-five days and then he's gone. Something like that.
I think there's a great demand for them.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think a lot of, you know, nice, nice hotels accommodate.
Yeah.
Those kind of people. I mean, for years, our general counsel was from out of town and he stayed every week at Little America for four years, was, he was our general counsel, you know, the company I was at. So, I mean, there's, good hotels accommodate these kind of needs.
Yeah, but it is nice if you're staying on an extended stay to have an efficiency kitchen or something of that nature, which most hotel rooms would not offer, but.
And you, you have, you have one in Pleasant Grove, not too far away, the Hyatt House, that's extended stay. You know, some of the other articles I saw is, you know, when you start to congregate a lot of these in one area, you know, that, that starts to bring some additional crime to the area. Cause you, you're starting to, that's all you have is those extended stay hotels.
Yeah, and that's just not even a quarter mile away. Yeah, that's true.
Thank you.
Well, we've made our recommendations to the city council and, and we'll see where they take this.
No, I guess I'd just like to say I appreciate staff looking at these and bringing them up. I guess they're not things that we think to, to bring up, so do appreciate staff watching out and putting in the work for those things.
I think the foresight, the foresight is good. I mean, a lot of times we, we, we were, the other cities that are having trouble with them didn't have that foresight and probably thought, oh, come on in, oh, welcome. And now they're experiencing the problem, so at least we're learning from some other city's mistakes. So thank you for bringing it up.
Okay. I guess we're on to, well, I read carefully through the ordinance, you know, as you have it written now, you know, and I think it's very good, so. I guess we're on to if there's any planning commission concerns or reports tonight? Anything you, questions you have for staff or reports?
I have a comment, just maybe you, somebody could look into it. There was some work being done on Main Street, close to the arena, early in the spring. And the signs are still up each November and the work's down and gone.
Road construction signs? Okay.
Is there somebody that, I don't know, I assume the contractor had called to have them picked up and they probably were never picked up.
Yep. I'll bring that up tomorrow morning.
No big deal, but yes.
And this is not a big deal, but I don't know if you ever talked to the, our trash contractor? They, they pick up the trash that, that, at the exact same time that people go to school, right in front of Oak Canyon. If they delay that truck ten minutes, it would make traffic, taking kids to school, a huge difference. Cause it, it just lines up, it turns there by Oak Canyon and it just backs as it does every single can. You know, if I get behind it versus, not a big deal, but I mean, it just, delayed ten minutes once, or, or ten minutes earlier or ten minutes later, it would make a huge difference in every Friday. Maybe it's just because I'm, I'm a creature of habit and I, I go at the same time and I get behind that, yeah, that garbage truck, is it?
You're talking about the street of Oak Canyon, not Center Street?
It comes up, it comes up center.
Turns right?
And then turns right.
Yeah, when everybody's going to school.
And I get behind it on center and it turns right.
I think he would want to avoid that himself. It's such a mess down.
It is, it's a mess, so I just.
Turns right out, Oak Canyon?
It turns right, right, and goes in front of Oak Canyon. And then, and so you have people trying to turn left into the school and right, you know.
That, that's a bottleneck anyway.
Yeah, and so, it'd just be, I mean, if they could delay it ten minutes or go ten minutes earlier, it would make all the difference right there.
I'm surprised Officer Campbell hasn't brought that up already to me, so.
Yeah, that's just, one of, one of those things I've noticed.
Leaving just safety with the amount of kids walking.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
I mean, I've sat there at that crosswalk for five minutes waiting for kids to cross Center Street.
So, that, that's just something I've noticed and I keep, I don't, finally it popped into my head at the right time to say it at one of these meetings, but.
I, I had one question. I've had a number of residents ask me about possible cleanup of the corner of Locust and four hundred North. And I'm sure you know the situation I'm talking about.
The cars are growing. They're multiplying.
Right, and the amount of stuff being brought onto.
For a year now, haven't I?
Did get the two cars off four hundred North.
Yeah, those are gone.
We had them towed this week.
Then moved, a couple of them moved into the yard.
I noticed they were gone. Yeah, that's great.
The couches are on a trailer now.
Been very wanting to buy a couches, man, it'll rain.
Well, I did notice those cars were gone and that does look better.
They got, they got towed last week, so we, we have a code enforcement officer now that is just awesome. He works Monday, Wednesday and half a day on Friday and he's chipping away at these things, so.
And is he working on that four hundred North and Locust corner?
He, did you or him do the couches? He did the couches. We've got, so, we've got some other work there, it sounds like.
Yeah, there's a lot. Yeah, I keep getting a lot of comments on that.
That same location, we, we existed, we, we approved it like two plats. I mean, not, I mean, two lots. Any history on what's going on the other lot or is that just?
She, the other sister was just having a hard time with, you know, I haven't talked to her in about six months, but construction costs six months ago had put her behind and probably interest rates now. So I imagine she'll be a little bit longer. She was not going to do a modular home like her sister. She wanted to do a stick frame built home and so I'm sure she's just delayed on that with different reasons.
Is there an ordinance in the city that prohibits like the public storage of cars in view of the public? I mean, they got, I mean, it almost looks like they're becoming a, all their friends are saying, hey, I'll give you twenty-five bucks to let me, let me park my motorhome or I boat or my car. I mean, it's, it just seems to be multiplying.
Well, they, they can't.
I mean.
At some point you're infringing on private property rights.
I know, I know.
And Linden is a little bit of country, so while I drive by it every day and so I shake my head.
It's a lot better than it was twenty-five years. That's why people moved to Linden twenty-five years ago, is to have a big enough lot to put all their junk on it.
I, I mean, I shake my head with the rest of you guys, but at the same time, I'm just like, you know what? This is their, we can only regulate, we can regulate, like expired cars on the road, you can tow, but.
Like side, front and side yards, we regulate it. If it's behind the house, we really don't get into that.
In North Dorset.
In landscaping, we don't regulate that.
We don't have a.
Other cities do. They give you a certain amount of time to put your front yard in.
Now they're giving them a certain amount of time to tear their front lawn out, yeah, and not have any at all.
So, um.
It's a front yard.
If there are people residing in those trailers.
Then they can't do, they, they can do it like as a visitor for.
For two weeks, isn't it?
Two weeks.
Just extended stay.
Two weeks every six months. Thirty percent of the, thirty percent of the trailers.
They may want to look at that as far as whether it's, those are being resided in.
Where's this at?
Just on the corner there, just on Locust.
Oh, really?
But I, I, I don't know, I guess I've seen it for so long, it doesn't, like I said, it.
And when it was a horse pasture two years ago, it wasn't bad.
Yeah, it's, but.
Is that before they, they said, you know, we go and hang out in there, our kids play in them, but we, we don't live in them, so.
I, I think that would be good to check.
And I know you'd mentioned, so further down the road, that maybe Tim Clive is going to come in with a site plan. But is that being pushed down or is it pushed down the road or, or is that still coming?
We, we have been having a hard, we, we had a first review and we've had a hard time getting his plans back to us. And so we're going to take some other action to try and get that moving forward.
Just wondering, you know, I know you'd mentioned it was hopefully coming, but.
It's what, been two, three years now and.
That's another one that, all those, all those plants on the berm and stuff, I think are pretty well dead now and.
Yes.
What about Fourth North and State?
On, on a good note, Main Street and two hundred South corner looks a hundred times better. They've done a good job over there.
Which one?
Breaking, breaking the speed record.
The Island Dance Studio.
Oh, yeah, I was going to say that they've done a nice job there, but let's go back to Fourth North and State Street, across from Pizza Factory.
We've made.
Everybody getting letters universally that needs to get a letter?
They have been getting texts and phone calls, so we're, we're working on that.
That's one of our gateway corners.
Yes.
And any more news on when or if anything's coming back, the city council on the Thornton property? I mean, they asked for, right, a, a change?
I was talking to Adam today and it sounds like that developer pulled out.
Okay, so that kind of, when they asked for the detention basin, that kind of killed it?
I bet it was more, it more than eighty.
It was more the, the twelve thousand, well, the, it was more the lot size, I think, killed it.
The twelve thousand was, was not small enough for them to.
The count, yeah. Well, well, we didn't even take that to the council. Or did we take the twelve thousand?
I thought you took the twelve, twelve thousand to the.
Yes, and then, then the detention, you're right, yes.
And so I was wondering if it was the twelve thousand or the detention.
He never responded. We met with him the next day because the council said, look, what if we, you know, you get, what was it, sixteen lots? What if you did a smaller lot so that the city could use the detention basin? And he's like, oh, let me look into that and he never responded after that.
You know, I, we're seeing a lot at the bank, a lot of projects are get, either getting put on hold or walking away from until this vets itself out, the economy in the next year or two.
Ready to bring you probably tonight or next meeting Ivory's three hundred and fifty apartments and they, they backed out.
Surprised at all that they, even Ivory's smart enough to know when it's time to phase something.
Yeah, they said we're going to put it off, put it on hold for at least six months.
Really?
Cause aren't the apartments not going to be on the other side of this H development, right next door to the H development where they're.
They're right next to the freeway.
They're right next to Geneva.
Next to Geneva.
Oh, Geneva, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, so right next to the other one.
They go right here.
And how many units are they proposing there?
Three hundred and fifty, or is it three eighty?
I think it's three eighty.
Three eighty.
But they backed, backed off for right now then.
Yeah, we were really close to bringing those to you and they said, they called.
They're getting close to them and finalized drawings and stuff or.
They have full engineering drawings on them.
How's it looking?
It looks really good. They're really nice apartments. They're all interior corridors. I mean, I can pull them up if you'd like real quick.
That'd be interesting.
Thanks, thanks, appreciate it.
Mayor Lundberg and I went to the groundbreaking this morning for the new Ruth Theater. That's going to be over by DoTERRA. That'll be the, take down the Orem Hale Center Theater. And that's going to be the, the new one. And they're going to call it the Ruth, named after Ruth Hale, Ruth and Nathan Hale. It's going to be nice.
Interesting.
It's five acres, it's five acres and it was kind of a. Um, fall of twenty twenty-four.
Sweet.
So they had a, a stage, they performed five or six different vignettes of different Broadway shows. It was really well done.
Yeah, I didn't know that was happening, yeah, so that's neat.
That's not going to hurt us at all.
No, that'll be nice addition to the seven hundred, right?
Yep.
It's going to be a nice facility.
So these are the four-story units. These will go closer, closest to the railroad tracks there in, in Geneva Road. So they'll do a two-story unit, a two-story building, a three-story building and a four-story.
Okay.
So are they, do any of the, are the units being structured in a way to where if they face the tracks in anticipation that someday the tracks may actually come through there or?
Yeah, let me pull up that site plan. Yeah, let me pull up that site plan. So this is the, the tracks line on this side here. And so you'll, these units, you'll have some, you'll have some garages right here, parking.
Oh, yeah.
Garages, drive aisle, parking, and then these units here will all face the tracks line. So you'll have a four-story building facing the tracks line for these, this side. So if I go back to here east, you'll, this is what you'd see, this top left one from the tracks.
Tracks is quieter than Front Runner.
Or is that right? No, actually, sorry, it would, it'd be this elevation. It'd be this west elevation. Yeah, I think it'd be east. Sorry, I'm getting my wigs.
Is there any access that, I mean, uh, where was the station gonna possibly go with that?
We don't know, um.
Or where would you propose a station, I guess?
Yeah, let me.
Let's see parcel up above, above it.
Yeah, I want to go back towards the civil drawings out.
Well, one of the pieces is the piece Central Bank owns that says not for sale on it.
Who owns that?
Central Bank.
Yeah, have you heard, why are they so, not for sale? They're, they're not moving on it? Are they holding it? Are they holding it for something or?
So.
Smart operators, Central Bank.
They're waiting, that's the trolley station. That, that's a track station. They'll get premium dollars.
Mayor, Mayor Packer assigned me to a Springville Committee and he's the owner, one of the owners of Central Bank, so I'm gonna get his ear one day and.
Yeah, they're, they're good, they're good operators.
Right, cause BRT is scheduled to go down seven hundred if it goes, right? I mean, currently, current plan.
If it goes, I mean, we're even hearing rumblings about that, um.
Yeah, at that meeting the other night, there were a lot of rumblings about that.
Yeah, it sounds like BRT was supposed to go in at the point where the, the state, state prison site is. But some legislators are starting to get involved and they wanna, they, they're liking the idea of tracks better over there.
BRT is, is lame.
And so then they, so that would kind of promote tracks coming over the point of the mountain to Lehigh and, and this way, so I mean, tracks is a lot more expensive, but um, I think that, even though we went through that whole study, I think the decision will probably be made at higher up, so. So I think it's, a track station would go somewhere on either side of this road. I know.
That's the one that Central Bank has, but.
No, they have this corner right here.
Yeah, right there across the tracks. And uh, but there's possibilities with these old homes here too.
Yeah, so it would, it would be somewhere in this general area right here.
And so is there any gonna be access from the apartments?
Yeah, that.
I guess that might, you know, if there's.
Yeah, I wanna work with them on that, um, so that there's this access here in the corner, right here, um, that they would have. Cause we're also working with uh, Mountain Land Association of Governments. And they wanna run a trail along this, along the uh, west side of the tracks right here. That would go uh, basically from, you know, Lehigh, American Fork down to Vineyard. So that, that would be a good connection if the apartments are, are on this property here to have that have that trail connection and that connection then to the station.
Right.
You mean like a bike trail?
Bike, multipurpose trail, yep. Kinda like the Murdoch.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, what I've seen a lot in those situations where they have the trolley station, trolley tracks or something. They try to put a lot of businesses in there right along the tracks, thinking, thinking it's gonna revitalize it and everything. And typically what I've seen is they struggle in there and then it becomes very difficult for law enforcement to service, cause they can't get their cars, it's, cars in there. So you're, they're caught, they're having to walk it, they're having to do stuff like that. So I've just seen it in, in several cities where it just hasn't been very effective to, to lock it in on both sides with little, little teeny businesses or shops. So the fact that you just have apartments there with access to use it as a transportation mode, I think makes it more sense for us.
Yeah.
And tracks wouldn't follow the BRT, right? It, it's, it's on that, it, it's on that.
Yeah, BRT would go east up to State Street.
Right, but tracks would just be on Geneva the whole time, correct?
Yeah, you know, uh, yeah, that's what we're assuming. I know Vineyard is pushing really hard to bring tracks to their city. And where Orem is fighting BRT, Vineyard's like, bring it here, we, we want it here. And so it's gonna be.
UT, they own the tracks.
Right.
U, UTA owns the tracks, we found out to about oh, they gave us a mile marker, but it's somewhere right in here. And then it turns into, back to Union Pacific. And so that's one of the problems they're having with the trail is UTA corridor stops about right in here. And then you, and then Union Pacific won't give them access for the trail. So they're trying to figure out how to get the trail from this point down to Vineyard.
Oh, I thought they'd sold, Union Pacific sold UTA clear to sixteen hundred North, six hundred South Linden. That didn't go that far, huh?
No, that's what the engineers told us last week. So they wanna connect that in right here to the Heritage Trail, so it comes just right on the freeway and straight up.
Yeah.
But Vineyard also wants it, another one connecting here to their downtown.
Well, someone that rides or used to ride BRT because, but the bus getting to BRT is a pain, so I don't. And so it would be, I mean, for someone, I would definitely love a, a transportation mode to get to.
Yeah.
Um, cause currently the State Street bus system is totally unreliable on their times and anything to to make it worth doing.
One thing they told us recently and I, I don't know if it'll come to fruition, but, so when, when Orem said, we don't want BRT, they had an extra million dollars to study BRT and they took that money and put it into the study for Front Runner going from, from Provo to Payson. And so UTA has told us, we wanna be, we wanna try and, since we may not get BRT anytime soon, we wanna start to um, enhance the State Street bus.
Yeah, cause that, that would make a big difference, um, cause I, I honestly would ride it if it was more reliable.
You need to get you an e-bike. You could go to BYU from your house in forty-five minutes.
I know I could. Well, I know.
During the, the warmer months.
There, there, there are residents of Linden who are regular bikes to BYU. It's just not. But no, I, I've thought about getting a new bike and, but it's just one of those things that if they don't put BRT or something in, I think BRT is not being utilized because the connections to it are, are bad. I mean, I, the students use it from, from UVU to BYU and anything in between, but the connections to it are are less than ideal.
Yeah, you're not gonna drive over, connect onto it to go to the Front Runner, probably. I mean, it's, it's students that are being.
It, it's students, I mean.
That's what all, you know, comes right by our office and that's all I ever see on it.
I mean, a lot of times, if my wife needs a car, wherever, she'll drive me to the mall, drop me off there and I'll get on BRT and finish in, cause it's shorter for her, but.
Like, it used to drive me nuts when I commuted to Salt Lake because I'd ride Front Runner up and you'd get to Murray, the tracks line would, tracks would show up just right in time, but the bus would leave. You know, and it was always unreliable to, to take the bus, so I know what you mean.
I, in the morning, I've got it down. I mean, I can get to, I can get to my office at BYU in forty-five minutes, no problem, you know, from leaving my house. But usually it's an hour and a half coming home, cause if you don't plan that just right, you're either sitting at the bus stop or you just missed it and you see it go and so it's forty-five minutes till the next bus comes.
They're supposed to come every ten minutes, but.
They don't. I, 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 I don't do that anymore.
Actually, sorry, it's fifteen for the State Street. It's supposed to come every fifteen.
But, yeah.
Well, Mike, are there items you'd like to bring up with us?
Yeah, so upcoming meetings, we've got a one-lot subdivision, um, on what street is that?
So we have, we have two flag lot minor subdivisions.
Yeah, I was just talking about the Collier one.
Oh, sorry, a hundred south.
Okay, so we got a flag lot, or just a one-lot subdivision on one hundred South coming, one on, a flag lot on four hundred North. We'll have a, a, remember where we approved all those storage units? That project's been bought out and there's an office warehouse building that wants to go back there now, um, which is.
Where is that at exactly?
Behind the Fazari bike, the old Fazari bikes.
On two hundred South, the old Fazari.
Yes, yeah.
And then we've got that.
My, my wants to go back there now.
Just a big office warehouse building.
Okay, so not the condo product, the.
Office, I think.
Storage condos.
Yeah.
Yeah. It didn't feel like it was gonna be a real deal to me, but.
Yeah, and then that training room on seven hundred North, that uh, gym that wants to come in. They've, they've submitted some renderings that we're working with them on. They look really good. I can show you those really quick.
On the, in the LV, the Lenny Village.
So were the storage units for those the ones that were gonna be individually owned? Is that what that was?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This will be a lot better.
There's a lot, there was a lot of problems with that.
Yeah, that was a funky business model.
This will be a lot better.
It's gonna turn into an extended stay.
Imagine that. That's even worse.
So this is the, the training room facility. They, we're working with them on the roof line. But it's, it's starting to turn out pretty good. We, we wanna work with the roof line so it has a little bit more commercial feel than industrial feel.
What is that?
This is that training gym. It's called the Training Room.
Okay.
So, we'll work, they're, they're redesigning the roof line, but other than that, it's, it's getting really close.
And remind me, is that, was that behind, up seven hundred?
This is the northwest uh, property.
There was one that was gonna have like a little, like a little shop or some, or some, a little pad behind it. Is that this one?
Um, this one's this.
Where they were gonna have, you know, like the, the, the smoothie shop and everything in it.
Down by the mortuary and.
This one's gonna go right here. They, they do want like a little restaurant on the, in one of the corners of the building.
Building versus, so I thought, my vague reaction when, when we, you know, they were gonna put a building and then maybe have a little separate building with a smoothie shop and stuff, but this is.
Cause that was gonna be like retail in the back or something, remember?
Yeah, they talked about, they're, they're gonna now do the, they'll have, they're, they're trying to get a little restaurant for the corner here. You can see some seating area right there.
Mike, speaking of that area, I heard something that I thought was, could be detrimental, and that is the fact that sta- staff wants seven hundred, I mean, Neanderson Boulevard to continue north, like straight up to the, to the, um, past the PG's dump site, um, and yet we've had a few people who were interested in there who basically said, no, I don't want trash trucks driving past my business twenty-four hours a day. What, what's the story on that?
Let me go to that. Okay, let me cancel out of that. Oh, will it pull up? So our transportation master plan has that connecting to Pleasant Grove. And so this is Anderson Boulevard, sorry, right here. This is Anderson Boulevard here. This has that connecting uh, up to American Fork, uh, to Pleasant Grove.
So crossing over seven hundred North.
Yeah, so if we, it has that connecting with this street here with Pleasant Grove Boulevard.
Which, where's the landfill? Where's their landfill?
It's right here. So we'll have to decide, is that something, as part of this general plan, is that something you still want on there? If you do, there's different engineering things we could do. This road is more narrow. This is only a fifty-eight foot? Let's see. Come on.
I, I see for some of the traffic, for some of the proposals we've seen before so far that haven't went through, I don't see, I, I'm not sure I see the, the need for that flow to go up there when we're trying to create this Linden village atmosphere.
Where's the large buildings that are being built right now on there? A little bit west?
They're right here. You know, the only thing I, you know, one benefit I see is, you know, you could get over to the DoTERRA site and, you know, this housing here would have more access to our commercial zone. Um, the, you know, from an engineering perspective, you know, you could put a roundabout right in here. And that way, you know, the garbage trucks could never get around it. You know, they, they would be stuck going down the the same, what is that road? Sam White Lane?
They're talking about, they just talked about expanding the landfill. They're just.
Too valuable a property.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're just do, they're just, I guess there's a proposal standing going now that took, they want to expand their landfill there.
So what they're expanding is the, the tonnage that can be brought into here. So we went and toured that, the mayor and I, Mary. Oh, you didn't. Anyways, I can't remember. It was ma- the mayor and I, we went and toured here. So what, what they're bringing in is more tonnage. It, and I, I was actually impressed. It was extremely clean. I mean, it was loud because of the trucks, but um, they, they said someday they may like to expand here, but I don't know if ple- they would have to get Pleasant Grove approval. Um, this is a different business here. This is a, um.
Ready mix.
Yeah, so yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard anymore from them wanting to expand onto the other property. It was just more tonnage that they're bringing in. They have water that comes down to keep the dust for the trucks. They've got, it adds a smell to it, so, to the, to the mist.
What, what refuge is going to that, that transfer station?
Oh, I don't remember.
I mean, ours is all going to Linden still, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, that must be all PG's is coming there, all the residential.
It's a rep, is it Republic or Ace? I can't remember.
Oh, it's a private. Oh, okay, yeah.
So they take it here, then take it, they transfer it to the big trucks. Big trucks haul it out west. To Fairfield, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just heard, when I saw that, that, I know we've had a few people, I heard that we've had a couple people interested in seven hundred there going, I don't wanna go, that to go through.
Mark Weldon was concerned about building next to it. He, he didn't wanna see the road go through. I think that's a discussion you need to have as part of this general plan update. If you don't wanna see it go through, let us know and we'll, you know, we need to talk about that more.
When is our next meeting on that?
Yeah, so our next, our next general plan meeting, um, we had talked about the first of December, with that, we may have to be the first of January. We're still writing it. We're, we've been making really good progress uh, with landmark design, but we might be a little bit longer on that. Um, we're also, we still, we need to circle around with our commercial design committee. I think that was Rob and Mike. Was there someone else on that?
I think I was on that.
And Steve, yeah. I think we need to circle around on that again. We've, uh, we got another update this week, so.
They'll let us know.
Yep, it'll probably be the first of the year.
Yeah, December's hard to have extra meetings.
Yeah, and then the city party, you saw they've changed the dates a few times on that.
The twentieth?
Twentieth reserved by the RSVP by the first. Where do they hold it?
Community center.
I said, quite a few times.
My wife's excited to go.
Yeah.
What, what's the entertainment this year?
I don't know, the police are in charge, so.
Oh, yikes.
Shooting range or something, I don't know.
Good job on this, you know, they did, they've done some good things, so.
Well, like last year, they had the high school come sing, but on the twentieth, you're not gonna have high school kids because they're all gone on Christmas break.
Yeah, so our next meeting will be November, yeah, November twenty-ninth and December thirteenth. Those are our last two meetings for the year.
December, say it again, December twenty-nine?
November twenty-ninth and December thirteenth.
If, if, if you don't have anything else, then let's adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second, I'll.
Goodbye.
Hi.
Hi.